Good morning, welcome to the special meeting of the Cape Coral City Council. Today is September 27, 2023. This meeting now comes to order. Please stand for the pledge allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice in its heart.
Madam City Clerk, please call the roll.
Yes, Your Honor, before I call the roll, I would like to announce that Councilmember Steinke has asked to be excused and will mark himself. Mayor Gunter?
Here.
Councilmembers Cosden?
Here.
Cummings?
Here.
Hayden?
Here.
Long? Shepherd?
Here.
Welsh?
Here.
Seven present, one excused.
Thank you. Item four, citizens' input time. Citizens' input, the maximum of 60 minutes is set for input on citizens on matters concerning city governments, three minutes per individual. Please remember to state your name if you're going to participate. We're going to use the podium to my left, your right.
Good morning, my name is Eileen Venazia. I'm here today to protect the wetlands in the area of Piney Point, in which some people are calling Red Fish Point mixed-use district. Right now, there's a large group of people assembled at Southwest Sixth Place in Rosegarden Boulevard at their location where a 100-foot-wide road would be constructed to allow access to the land to be developed. They are rallying to protect the wetlands of Piney Point. The construction of that road would require the vacancy of conservation easement under which the land is held. That easement is there just to prohibit this type of devastation of precious wetlands that have acres of mangroves on it. These mangroves are so important that just recently, a bill has been filed for the 2024 legislative session to fund restoration efforts to identify vulnerable coastal areas for mangrove restoration. This bill would require the Florida DEP to identify these areas. When the state of Florida is actively trying to protect and restore mangroves to protect vulnerable coastal areas, why would anyone deliberately destroy acres of mangroves and wetlands? Every acre is precious. On Sunday, the news press reported that Holly Smith, the recent mayor of the city of Sanibel, stated that new folks coming in and wanting to develop property on the island asked her, and I quote, "Hey, we want to do this here, but can we get around this wetland thing? It's not a big deal, right?" And she sat across the table from representatives of a pretty big organization who wanted to do this development, and she stated, "This isn't the place you're going to be building because this is a big deal, right?" She went on to state, "You have these moments where you have to stand up and assert what the place is all about." Piney Point in Cape Coral is one such place where the city should stand up and state that destroying the wetlands is not something we do. A recent article in the Cape Coral Breeze had a representative of the current owners stating that this development would not affect Rotary Park. While the road does not go through Rotary Park, the trees will be raised just south of the property line, trucks rumbling back and forth for years as first land is filled in and raised to whatever height is required, and then the actual construction begins. The quiet and wildlife that so many people come to Rotary Park will be adversely affected forever. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else wishing to speak on citizens' input, please come forward. See, and none citizens' input is now closed. So any council discussion on citizens' input. See, and none will move on to item five is business, 5A is the consent agenda. We only have one item on the consent agenda, which is Resolution 257-23. And I know there's a staff presentation, so I will turn it over to our city manager first.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. As we all are aware, post-storm and even preceding that, insurance in Florida is becoming a challenging situation, and the city is not immune to that. We're experiencing the same level of concern and level of premiums. And in that regard, we had asked for some additional time to review the city's coverage and the limits that we have before we bind that coverage and move forward into the new fiscal year. We have a presentation from the Finance Department, some solutions, and also some additional forward thinking that we could continue to drive down rates and maybe shift some of that risk to the city, understanding what those risks are. So with that, I'll turn it over to Mark.
Good morning, Mr. Mason.
Good morning, Mayor. Councilmembers Mark Mason, Financial Services Director. First of all, thank you for delaying the time to have this meeting. It gave us, us and the Florida Municipal Insurance Trust, some time to go back and get some alternatives and some of the things we'll talk about today and the alternatives into the cost of insurance as well as the limits that we would be looking at. And so, the purpose of the meeting today is to renew our annual property insurance, casualty insurance coverage with the Florida Municipal Insurance Trust. We've been with the Florida Municipal Insurance Trust, I believe, for the last five years, and we have a very good working relationship with them. The amount of support that we received from them from Hurricane Ian really is, was top-notch, and frankly, it's helped us get to where we are today in our recovery with, from Hurricane Ian. Timeline of this event, May-June, we start the renewal process, we do some of the items, drug-free workplace credit application, we do some other things in order to get to a point where we can, you know, kind of discuss where we're going to be as far as rates are concerned. In July, we were notified of a rate increase potentially up to a 200% increase in rates. However, we didn't have any detail as to what rates and what coverages were going to change. During the course of the next several months, we received some info, we completed some online applications, and on 9/11, we received our renewal quotes. When we received renewal quotes, some of the things that went into that affected the property rates adjustments were that the global insurance capacity is dwindling. We found this out from Florida Municipal Insurance Trust and clearly, I think, from many of the articles regarding insurance in the state of Florida. Clearly, there's been a decrease in the insurance capacity within the state as well as globally. Inflation in the labor and construction materials, our policy is on a replacement cost basis, so it's for us to replace items that were built 10, 15, 20, 30 years ago. What they were built for then and what they would be replaced for today is completely different. And so, the labor and the construction materials and the increase in the replacement values of insured properties played a big part in the, in the cost of the, of our insurance for fiscal year, for fiscal year 2024. In addition, Florida, and I clearly, after being hit by Adalia, you know, shows that we have a frequency and a higher, higher frequency and a higher severity of storms that are hitting the state of Florida. We also are one of the highest-risk zones in the world when it comes to Florida, and carriers are raising their rates significantly. As an example, on a per $100 value for total insured value, the rates have increased from 2.6 percent, 2.6 cents per $100 of value to 7, $7, 7.3 cents per $100 of value. So that kind of gives you an idea of the overall cost and the rate adjustments that we're seeing, and that by itself is a 178% increase. Also, the rising risk is a result of the increase in the frequency and the severity of natural disasters, and it's just not natural disasters in the state of Florida, it's also natural disasters that are happening all over the world. So one of the things that we saw, some of the exposure changes that we saw with regard to our insurance policy, we saw total insured value increase 30% from $654 million to $851 million. We'll be talking about total insured value here shortly. Workers' comp payrolls, we saw an increase, about a 1% increase. Fortunately, our workers' comp mod rate stayed flat at .69, and .69 is a very, very, very good mod rate. Auto liability claims, we've seen a very, a large increase in auto liability claims and auto physical damage claims. We've also seen a sizable increase in those as well. General liability claims, this is when people are suing us, and we've seen a significant increase in those types of claims as well. The asset survey, that which goes into determining the total insured value was completed in September of 2022 and just prior to Hurricane Ian. And the last survey prior to that was in 2017. We generally have these done about every five years, so during, in between 2017 and 2022, the overall total insured value increased over 30%. So one of the things that we asked Florida Municipal Insurance Trust to go back and do is look at the potential of changing our limits. When you're talking about the limit on the value of what it is that we're insuring, what we found is that, as well as the names, the name storm deductible, our current policy shows for a 5% insurance deductible, we're looking at 10%, changing that name storm deductible to 10%. But just at $150 million limit, which is the max limit that Florida Municipal Insurance Trust can actually bind to, at just changing the name storm deductible about by 5% would save a little over $1 million in the insurance policy. Decreasing down to a $50 million limit adds an additional $200,000 to that change. So from, from an indicator standpoint, that would tell us between 50 and $100 million is that we're basically over-insuring to a, to a limit that we don't really need. And so, $50 million would make more sense today from a, from a limit standpoint, and one of the things that we'll be looking for and continuing to do over the course of the next year is looking at evaluating even that limit as whether it's an appropriate limit for us. So when you're talking about the premium summaries and what it is that where we were in 2023, what came before us in 2024, the 2024 and the changes between the name storm deductibles and decreasing down to a $50 million limit. We started out in 2023 with a $2.5 million total real property and real and personal property coverage or premium from Florida Municipal Insurance Trust. With the 30% increase in, in total insured value as well as the overall increase in the rates per $100 of a total insured value, we saw a 218% increase in just real, the blanket real and personal property, but we also saw some increases in some of the other insurance coverages that we also have. So what we saw from a total insurance standpoint, 2.5 million to 6.2 million, about 149% increase. When we sat down and talked to them after we received this on 9/11, we sat down and talked with them on 9/15 and walked through the potential of changing some of these coverages. Moving the name storm deductible from 5% to 10% at $150 million would have been 100, about 108% increase in the, in the overall premium. But at the same time, we also discussed the potential of changing limits. And for them, for the Florida Municipal Insurance Trust, in order to identify what the limits changes would be for us, they would have to go back, bring it out to their actuaries, do a modeling on those limits, and then we received that information this past Monday in order for us to be able to stand here before you today to bind coverage at our recommended rate of $50 million limit and a 10% name storm deductible. And so, right now, we would be looking at an overall premium a little over $5 million. Internally, working with risk management, the $50 million still may be high, but we need to bind coverage for fiscal year 2024, and we would start the binding of that coverage with fiscal year 2024 and then work with the Florida Municipal Insurance Trust and look through our own, our own asset list to determine what assets can actually be pulled off of the, of the system and self-insure those assets. To give you an idea of what we received as far as insurance payments or insurance is concerned, overall, we had direct payments received a date of $2.2 million. We do not expect any more direct payments. Those have all been taken care of. They were all taken care of as little as probably about four months ago. Turnkey projects, as you're aware, we, Synergy, which is a subcontractor to Florida Municipal Insurance Trust, we gave them certain projects for them to go out and do permanent repairs on several of our facilities, 26 of them to be exact. And of those 26 facilities, where they've been paid to date $2.8 million, and I think there might be a couple hundred thousand dollars left over from that, that still needs to be paid out. So overall, we're looking at about $5 million in recovery on a premium of $2.5 million, or as we go forward, that premium will increase, and the overall amount of recovery in the future with a 10% name storm deductible will actually decrease. And so, from our perspective, what we're looking at is, is that there's more self-insurance on our part that will likely start to pick up just on the deductible side that we believe will be beneficial, that if we keep the insurance or we keep the payments internally, we'll be able to set those aside, create the appropriate risk profile going forward, and set aside the funds in order to be able to meet this term in the future. As a reminder, Hurricane Ian was, I believe, right now it's called the Cat Five Storm. It was the most powerful storm to hit Cape Coral, and this is the level of insurance recovery that we've seen from that particular storm. So our recommendation is to go with the $50 million limit and continue to work down on that limit over time, increase the name storm deductible from 5% to 10%, and over, and again, we'll look at reducing the property assets on the property schedule and making a determination of what should be actually covered moving forward with regard to our current assets. One of the things that we noticed after the storm, some of the buildings that we own, you know, that sustained very little damage, and they've been built in the last 20 years. And so, the question for us is, is do we need to have a full replacement, full 100% replacement value insurance coverage on each one of those buildings that sustained very little damage from the most powerful storm that's hit Cape Coral in, ever? And so, that's some of the things that we're looking at, and so the recommendation again is to reduce property coverage limits from, from $150 million to $50 million, bind coverage at that value, bind coverage on the name storm deductible at 10%, and we'll continue to work with Florida Municipal Insurance Trust to continue to lower the premium for the assets that we would insure. And I'm here for any questions. Thank you.
I think I'll give the FMIT opportunity if they want to weigh in the conversation, but before I do that, Mr. Mason, in your presentation on Slide 6, you show a reduction from that 150 million down to 50 million. Would you happen to have the numbers for 100 million?
No, I don't. We, when we took this and lowered it down, again, it, you're recovering $5 million even on 150 million limit. At $100 million, you'd still be recovering even less on 100 million. So if it were $100 million, let's just call it $100,000 decrease, you know, I don't know that that would be the case. It might be actually closer to the $4.3 million than $100 million. But we looked at it from taking a larger chunk down to see what that number would be, and frankly, I would have expected to see a larger decrease in the overall premium, but we didn't see that, and the reason why we didn't see it is because we have not gone back through the, the asset list and determined what should be and what should not be covered for insurance purposes.
And the reason I ask that question, I mean, when you look at those two numbers, I would have thought there would have been more of a reduction myself, but when you look at that, we've, you know, you got triple the coverage for $200,000 more, and economically, you know, that, that looks like a bigger bang for your buck for me. That's why I was curious where the $100 million would, would fall, but like you said, even if we just split it a little over $100,000. But that's one of the things that jumped out at me personally is $150 million of coverage for, for X, and then when we reduce the, you know, the, the amount of the, of the limit down to 50 million, which is less than, you know, about three times, we're only saving $200,000, so that's why I asked that question. But I will give FMIT an opportunity if they have anything they want to add. If not, that's okay, but I know you made the trip, so I wanted to give you the opportunity.
Thank you, thank you, Mayor, Council. I'm Clay Austin, this is Lindsay Johansson from the Florida Municipal Insurance Trust and the Florida League of Cities. Just wanted to say, we've worked closely with your Finance Department here and your Risk Management team. Y'all have got a good team here. It's a challenging year, obviously, you're, you're hearing that from them, and it was just glad they sat down, worked with us, and I think that they've come up to a solution for y'all, and if there's any questions we can answer on behalf of the FMIT, we're here to do that.
Thank you. Okay, with that, I'll open the floor for any discussion. Somebody's going to be awake this morning.
Well, I'll, I'll make a motion to approve Resolution 257-23 that accepts the binding coverage pursuant to Quote Number FBP 036832900 and Infernices 27, which sets the blanket real and personal property limit at $50 million, and that establishes a named storm deductible at 10% based upon the quoted annual premium of $5,013,384, and authorizing the city manager to execute any appropriate documents that are necessary for this binding coverage and further authorizing the city manager or their designee to continue negotiations with the Florida Municipal Insurance Trust in order to reduce the annual premium amount.
I'll second that.
Okay, now I'll open up the floor for any discussion since we have a motion in the second on the floor. Is there any discussion? Again, any question that I had, Mr. Mason, you know, we had a 30% increase in valuations with our, with our property, it appears, if you look at Slide number five. Can you tell me why you feel the, the reduction of three times and the savings of 200,000, why you feel that's a better plan? Because I'll be honest with you, I'm not particularly sold on that. You know, to me, to get $150 million of coverage and it's only a 5% increase in the premium, you're getting triple the, triple the insurance for, for a 5% increase. So can you, you kind of tell me what, you know, why you feel that's a better plan, other than we're saving $215,000?
Well, frankly, when I looked at it, I looked at it from the same standpoint, the, but we're at the same point where we have not yet gone back through the asset list and removed assets that probably don't need that level of coverage. Give you an example of some of that, we had the RO plant, the South RO plant had damage to its roof. Cost of that damage is about $700,000. That were, it's $800,000 to replace the roof on the RO plant. The coverage in the name storm deductible was $3 million, so we're already self-insuring just a replacement of the roof today. And so, from my perspective and from an insurance standpoint, it's, I think it's better for us to be able to put aside the funds to replace assets in the future as opposed to putting it into somebody else's pocket and, you know, for them to replace our assets in the future. That's number one. Number two, the, we have not yet gone through these assets. As an example, I would tell you that every fire station that was built since 2005 had very little damage with regard to the storm. So the question is, is do they really need to be insured from a, and so they, do they even need to be included in our total insured value for replacement cost? Because it's generally speaking, what we're insuring for is storm damage. We're not, although we certainly insure for fire, every one of our fire stations also has a, you know, a sprinkler system and has everything necessary to prevent fires within those, those facilities. So what we're doing is, we're putting so much into the cost of those buildings, it seems, it, it's less important for us to have to cover a large insurance or replacement value on those, those facilities. And we've been looking at the older facilities in the city from a replacement value standpoint and make a determination of whether we even need to look at full replacement value on some of those facilities. So binding at $50 million today and leaving it at $50 million and starting to whittle away at the total insured value will likely decrease that $4.3 million today or $4.1 million and down much further than we would have if we had stayed at 150 million.
And additionally, I know I'd asked this question, and I don't know if the rest of council got that information, on the dollar amount that we budgeted from FY '23 to '24. Can you let council know exactly what that budgeted number was, knowing that we were going to have an increase?
4.6 million.
From?
From the previous year of 2.5 million.
Okay.
We did not budget at the full 200, 200% increase. We didn't know exactly what that encompassed. We didn't have the detail of what that increase really meant to us. And so, I didn't just double up 2.5 million to, you know, to 6 million or whatever it was. We didn't look at it from that standpoint.
So we put 4.6, you said?
Correct.
So with 4.1 million as far as the premium, then there's no economic impact for FY '24 because that's about 500? Oh, for the overall?
Yes, it's 5 million. That's the number we're really looking at.
Yeah, so we're, we're about 400,000 right now if we approve the recommendation of the 4.1, and that could even be reduced more once we identify some of these assets.
We expect it to be reduced more.
Okay. All right, that's all the questions I have.
This won't carry us all, all the way till the end. This is to bind coverage at this dollar value and start the process with Florida Municipal Insurance Trust to see a decrease in that number.
Okay. Councilmember Hayden?
Yeah, Mark, I, you know, I believe it's a fair amount of coverage. My, I think my bigger concern is depending on how the legislature reacts to any bills that come before them on what to do about the insurance problem. This doesn't guarantee that we don't face increases for fiscal year 2024, 2025, correct?
It doesn't, but I, I think, you know, we've gone fully self-insured on health insurance. I think it probably would make sense that we really evaluate the, the level of insurance that we're actually paying for our facilities and the amount that we're actually receiving back when we actually need to use it. I think the most important thing that we received, although certainly, you know, getting a little money back on our insurance premiums was important, but the most important asset we received from Florida Municipal Insurance Trust was the recovery afterwards.
Right.
And having their staff, their people onboard here, Synergy onboard, evaluating every one of our facilities, identifying what those costs will be, bringing in the adjusters that they needed to bring in when we needed the adjusters in here, and going through and identifying what the cost replacement of cost would be that we'd end up having to pick up, and then whatever our deductibles were associated with those. You know, the $2.8 million, I showed you that they're, they're fixing, there's also deductible amount that goes on top of that. And so, it's, the, the total cost of those repairs will certainly exceed 2.8 million, but that's our cost that we pick up. So the question for us is, is that do we want to be able to say, do we want as, to try to maximize the amount that we're going to receive, or do we want to make sure that we have the resources necessary in-house to pick up the cost of, of that recovery and utilize, from my perspective, the, the best asset that Florida Municipal Insurance Trust has, and that's the recovery asset that they provide to municipalities?
The number that got my attention was the auto liability claims jumping 1,800%. Is that expected? Is that a surprise? Any other, any particular reasons why that kind of a jump?
Is there a reason for them?
Other than?
Other than?
We're in a very litigious environment.
Right.
And sometimes the, you know, when it really, when you're looking at these types of claims, it depends on, you know, who's at fault and a number of those factors. We have a very good group of people that work to negotiate those claims, and, you know, the amount that is originally requested and the amount that we generally settle at in some cases and go away, you know, are much less. So we, could be a whole lot higher. But is there a reason for it? Well, people get in accidents.
That would be obvious. Thanks, Mark.
Yeah, Mr. City Manager, I see your light on, so I'll go to you next. So I'll ask this question real quick as well that you can incorporate into your response. It appears that, you know, we're moving in a different direction where we may be self-insuring certain items.
Correct.
So my question to you is, are we going to add anything into our budget on a yearly basis, knowing that we are going to be self-insuring certain items? So at least, you know, we start building up in a particular, you know, line item in the budget. So will we be doing that in the future?
Very well. Let me back up and just touch base real quick on the previous question. So the, what you're looking at there is the claims, and if you see the starting number was 9,400. I mean, so you're talking about an entire year with $9,400 in claims. We went to 178,000. That could be, realistically, could only be one accident, depending on the level of severity of the claim. When you look at the actual premium for the auto liability, it went from 103,000 to 115,000. So even though we had that big claim and that big payout and claim, the insurance premium for that liability only went up 11.6%. So I think, I think the, what you're seeing there is just the starting number from the previous year was just an outstanding year for our insurance profile. As it relates to self-insuring, absolutely. So once we start to continue to move down this path of identifying what buildings are appropriate for fully insured in the private sector versus migrating into a self-insured pool, it's likely that we'll end up engaging, you know, an actuary to determine what level of funding would be required annually to sustain the self-insurance fund itself. We're going to migrate slowly, right? We're not going to jump into this all at once. This is, this is the first step. But we'll have to put together a full picture of, you know, what buildings have sprinklers, what buildings do not, what buildings have new metal roofs which do not, which have storm hardening windows and doors and which do not, and then start to identify what makes sense to move out of the total insured pool into the self-insured pool so that we balance that risk to premium profile appropriately during the transition. But we will definitely end up having to begin budgeting for both what we're self-insuring as well as the premiums.
Okay, any other discussion? I don't see any lights on. Do we have a motion? I'm sorry, Councilmember Cummings?
Yeah, I just have a question. So from my understanding, that we're going to use some self-insurance is what you guys are pretty much stating, correct?
Correct.
So if we do that, we still have to pay money for that as well, correct? So how much money are we actually saving? Is my question. So if we're actually saving $200,000 from going from 150 to 50 million, but yet we still have to self-insure, we still have to pay the other insurer. So are we still saving money or are we back balanced out at that $200,000?
Yeah, well, it depends on the total approach, right? I don't, I don't want to be so broad, it doesn't make sense, but some of the ideas that we're, we've already been discussing is in all of our new buildings that right now don't require fire sprinklers, perhaps we start adding them into, into the buildings this way, instead of putting it into the total insured pool and paying an insurance premium through FMIT or another provider, we could put that building then into the self-insured pool and then the risk profile there. We just, you know, you're insuring for the unknowns. So we just had a category five, and we see the level of recovery and the level of damage sustained, including flooding, wind, you know, catastrophe, name storm. So we, we have a, to some extent, we, what was an unknown to us is now unknown. And so really, what we have left on the unknown is fire. And so how can we best mitigate that fire risk profile to then begin to make that known? And then we're really replacing, you know, carpet and some sheet rock. So when you ask about savings, I think you, I think your question is more related to the fiscal year '24 budget, and I would say at this point, there's not a savings, right? We actually are going to have to come up with $400,000 more from what's budgeted to what our premium will be. But I would ask you to look at it on a much larger scale, and ultimately, the savings will be known over the life cycle of the assets, and that's what we're trying to manage against.
Because that's my concern, it's like you were saying, the unknowns. It is unknown, and what could happen next? So from going from 150 to 50, that's a huge jump, knowing that we're also a growing city. So that's just my concern. It's, I'm kind of like what the mayor stated, you know, where was the 100 million? What was it like if we even went in the middle? But not trying to create problems here, I'm just trying to figure it out as well. So.
I think what, I think what you're seeing with that 150 to the 50 million dollar decrease really is the level of overinsurance that we've had, right? I mean, so sure, we can, we can bind the coverage at the 150 and pay the extra 200,000, but it really is just additional overinsurance that we, that we really don't need. So, you know, if you look at the total insured value that we have on Page Five, I mean, it's $851 million in assets. And we're currently, even last year, we were at 654 million with 150 million of insurance. And in comes Ian, and we see the level of claims and the level of damage. Our facilities fared really well. I mean, that means we've built them appropriately to the appropriate wind category and minimized that risk with the upfront construction. So the issue now is that 850 million, do you want to stay at the 150 when we didn't really need it? And so that's where we're looking at, how do we start this migration and try to recognize some savings so that we can either, one, put it towards additional building hardening or we can put it towards, you know, the self-insurance? We're going to continue that total insured value that we have, you know, we're going to continue, as Mark said, to look at those buildings and start to identify which ones are appropriate for us really to say, okay, here's the risk profile of that structure. Is it such that if we had a loss, we couldn't sustain it without it being covered? And that's the exercise that we really need to start going over, over the next three months.
Thank you.
Councilmember Long?
Yeah, that was it. I was just going to try to clarify it in fewer words. I appreciate the detail, but it's really just risk tolerance at a certain point. So now we're in a position where we're hedging against what was previously an unknown vulnerability that now we to some extent know through recent storm. And so, I mean, we could likely increase it to a billion dollars if we wanted to for another 250, but what do we need it, I guess, is the idea. So, yeah, I mean, we, 200,000? We're saving differences?
200,000 between 150 and 50 at a 10% name storm deductible overall in this particular circumstance, you know, the, again, alls we're doing is overinsuring for $200,000 for insurance that you really don't need.
And use that to buy a half a bay door, right?
Government rate, yeah.
And frankly, the $50 million that we're recommending is to just keep the risk there, but, you know, the likelihood is, is that we could be down at $15 million, to be perfectly frank.
Sure. All right. Awesome. Thank you.
I'm sorry, you done? Councilmember Welsh?
Yeah, I agree with your changes here. The only thing I'm going to suggest is as we start moving some of these assets around, potentially looking and going back to a 5% deductible instead of the 10% because I don't know where that number is with how much we recovered, but that extra, I've always, I've always found in my own insurance, not having the higher coverage but the less deductible always seems to be the better move. So just keep that in mind as we get through this, moving to self-insure and stuff like that, is, don't stick at the 10, maybe go back and look at the 5 next go around. But for this time, I think your suggestions are, thank you.
Thank you.
Any other discussion? Seeing none, we have a motion and a second on the floor. Madam City Clerk, please call the roll.
Cummings?
Aye.
Gunter?
Aye.
Hayden?
Aye.
Long?
Aye.
Shepherd?
Aye.
Welsh?
Aye.
Austin?
Aye.
Seven ayes, motion carried.
Okay, I will move on to the next item, you know, before I go to Item 6, time and place of future meetings, just real quickly, want to ask council, we have a regular council meeting on October 4th at 4:30 PM here in council chambers. I would like to have a special meeting at 3:00 PM to discuss the evaluations for our council staff and for the auditor. So I wanted to find out if that will work for all of our council members to have that special meeting at 3 o'clock, and we'll have that particular meeting, if it's available, I guess, in conference room upstairs, is that 2:20? Yep, so we'll have that in Conference Room 2:20.
What was that date, Mr. Mayor?
I'm sorry?
What was that date again?
October 4th. We have a regular council meeting at 4:30 PM, so we could do that at 3, I think, 3:00, 3:30, probably a 30, 45 minute conversation, probably. So, does that work for everybody? Okay, Madam City Clerk, do we need to have a vote on that?
For additions to your meeting calendar, it is recommended, and you had said 3 or 3:30 a few moments ago?
3, 3 o'clock, 3:00 PM.
So it's a special meeting on October 4th at 3:00 PM in Conference Room 220A for council staff evaluations and city auditor evaluations? Okay.
Can I get a motion for that?
Motion to approve a special meeting at 3:00 PM, at 3:00 PM on October 4th for the evaluations of the city auditor and the city council staff.
Okay.
Any discussion? Madam City Clerk, please call the roll.
Cummings?
Aye.
Gunter?
Aye.
Hayden?
Aye.
Long?
Aye.
Shepherd?
Aye.
Welsh?
Aye.
Austin?
Aye.
Seven ayes, motion carried.
Okay, move on to Item 6, time and place of future meetings. We have a committee, the whole meeting today, Wednesday, September 27, 2023. I think we'll come back at 9:50. That'll give staff enough time to get things switched over. So with that, do I have a motion to adjourn?
Motion to adjourn.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Meeting adjourned.